We call this meeting City Council's order, January 7th, 2020. Are there any additions to the agenda?
I would like to discuss under new business department heads spending authority.
Some move.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. Any other additions to the agenda? Any citizens comments this evening? Okay, consent agenda, approved minutes, regular council meeting, December 17th, 2019.
Some move.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries. Appropriation ordinance, one, seven, 2020, in the amount of eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars, and petty cash of fifty-seven dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries. Excuse me?
The mayor specialties, twenty thousand, is that talking about? Was it like seventeen thousand? Did we go over because?
We added more.
We added just a little bit? I forget what that number we talked about was.
It was either three hundred or eight hundred more feet. And I think that there might have been a little bit more, um, like the worst spots. We might have got charged for like deeper cleaning. So I guess I'll explain that. I don't remember if it was the three hundred feet. I'd have to look up for sure. Three hundred or eight hundred rings into my head when we added that extra feet on there.
I guess. Anything else? Okay, department heads.
I'm staying from that. I didn't ever. I'm staying because Dave's left those on here.
Anything else? Okay. Do we have anything from Jeff?
No, Jeff's been sick for two days.
Okay. Public utility supervisor, Jason.
I have a couple things. The papers there in front of you were for the cabinet and we were, hopefully, we can sit there and get a go on the the pumps, the cabinet, everything that we need to get that lift station back up to snuff. And Jeff, Jeff, I was on vacation and Jeff went ahead and got the bid on that from Smith and Lovelace. And that's what that pertains to is getting that lift station back up to par. And if we do this, and I like to do it anyway, is I want to put a bar screen in front of the pumps so we can get most of the trash and garbage out of that before it even gets to the new pumps.
And this is all at the sewer pond?
Sewer plant, at sewer pond, yep.
I think Jeff brought it up to you guys last maybe. I think we discussed it a little bit.
Sewer ponds or lift station?
It's the lift station at the sewer pond, sewer plant.
That was where you guys had the big problem with it being plugged up here.
No, that was on Fifth Street.
No, no, no. No, two, three months ago, they had to, they had to tear everything apart out there because the pumps were plugged with.
But three weeks ago.
And then a time, couple times before that too.
Do you have any photos?
Okay, this is, this is the lift station at the sewer plant. That pumps it from city up into the sewer ponds.
This is the one that was coming out the manhole cover on Northwest, Northwest Street?
Yes.
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 Northwest Street.
In the records that, yeah, just a couple of weeks.
Do you have any photos? Because Jeff and I talked about bringing photos or something, cell phone stuff that you could show the council one.
No, no, I do not.
Do you, Jamie?
All I've heard is what was in the minutes. I don't, we've never talked about anything out of sewer plant. Previous council meetings, it was all on Fifth Street.
You're just saying electric oil pump boxes. I don't know if that's going to help you much.
No, because it's, it's been two or three months ago, hasn't it, Jason?
Yeah, it just happened here two or three weeks ago.
Right, but you guys had it all tore apart up there when it was plugged up.
Yes.
And that's been good.
Check valves are not working correctly. And then, and so we can't even take, we can't, and then the valves to shut the valves off.
They won't shut off.
They won't even shut up either. And that's why we were, that's why I want to build the weir box out there. So then when we're working on it underneath the, down in the pit, we can sit there and get the hoses and then get a pump and get, going over to number one. So that way we can start working down in there. And then, and then put a weir gate, everything, so that way the hose, you know, it just pumps it all over there. We don't have to worry about it getting down there when we got the valves and the check and everything getting replaced. And that's got to get done first. Because the way it looked on there, the way it looked on that paper, it's going to be a ten to twelve week out anyway.
Right.
And when it happens. And so that would give us plenty of time to get that up to concrete set, get a stainless steel screen built. And get it down in there. And this way, hopefully, we won't have to worry about a bunch of of stuff getting caught in that new pumps and the new checks and all that, and which it will. So that's, that's going to be the benefit.
So does this include the cost of pumps or just a, what, what exactly is this?
From what I, what I was told, that was the cabinets, the check, the pump. And then, but not installation. That would have to be in-house installation.
Okay, so if you put a weir in, the weir will go in your septic system.
The weir will be out by the fence.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to rake it out and everything will be cleaned up except for just the water. And you know, whatever little gets past that screen.
This is just material. And not installation?
No. Nope.
Owner is responsible for installation, including all inspection and approved compliance of the installation. But I think this is just more the controls and the piping assemblies. And that seems like a lot. I mean, you're, you're controlling two five-fourish motors.
Yeah, this doesn't have the pumps on it, does it?
No, there, there's no pumps.
There aren't any pumps on it.
Okay. I thought Jeff said the pumps and the checks on there too.
Well, there, there's some valves and there's some gaskets and.
Because I was, what we were thinking is we could sit there and get, I thought we were, he was going to get the two and then we could take the old ones out and get them sent in and have some spare.
Says air compressor. It's circuit breakers for controllers, dehumidifier, light and blower, air compressor and sump pump. I think that's just the breakers. I don't think that includes a sump pump for any of that stuff. It's not very. I would almost suggest see if you can get a better bid, different bid. And maybe a better explanation. I mean, I'm not anyone to decide anything.
Okay, well, I like to say Jeff got those. I wish he was here to help me back this up.
Right.
I mean, as far, we, I think we need to get more bids than just one, don't you?
I mean, that, that sounds like a lot, yes, yes.
One, the other thing, Jason, is to make sure they're apples to apples, the bids, those, I don't know. Just to make sure that they're comparable.
I'm not sure who else does this kind of stuff, Jason.
Yeah, it'll be in Smith and Lovelace, I'm not for sure.
I mean, this is, this, is this all installed or you guys put?
No.
Owner installation.
No installation.
Owner installs.
I would suggest, I talked to Jeff about when he told me it went down to bring some photos because I've never, I don't even know, have any idea what to visualize it in.
Okay, yeah, I can get that.
You got a screen here and Jamie can put stuff up from her computer on screen so you can see.
I think it would be better if you guys went out there. I mean, I can put pictures up, but.
Well, I could take some down the pit because I don't think they'd want to go down anymore.
I had no, I had no idea we were having trouble out in sewer ponds, I guess. I don't.
That was my understanding. It was Fifth Street that we had problems with the lift station. We do. But prior to Fifth Street having the problems, here recently, we had problems out at the sewer plant.
And we had a problem. At a meeting?
At a meeting.
It was discussed at a meeting, but I don't think it was, it was as as hyped as it is right now. It seemed like, to me, it seems like it was minor when we first talked about it. That's why.
Let's just back up.
Confusion on that.
Yeah, they spent a couple day, or a day or a day and a half getting everything unplugged and, and fixed out there when it first happened.
It was actually, it actually got called in because water was, sewage water was coming out of the manhole cover up there.
Right.
Before it got to the plant.
Just a few days ago.
Yeah, that was after Fifth Street.
Couple weeks ago. I was on call when I got called up there.
It was like the torn.
Yeah, but prior, even prior to that.
We had problems.
You had problems with it being plugged up.
Yeah, we had a piece of concrete in there that got in there and then rags getting wedged in there between the casing and the, and the peronum pump impeller. And it's, yeah.
But that's been two or three months ago when that's.
Yes, that one, that's when that.
That's when the first time it was discussed at council was when that happened.
Yeah, because see, the, one of the problems is, is the check valves. And I don't quite understand that ancient thing, but it's, it's old. And what, what it does is the pump, when it, when it pumps, it kicks on. And then when it, when it sits there and hits that and starts letting off of the water, it shuts the pump off on a switch of when the check valve comes up. And then that's what tells it, and I don't quite understand all of it down there. I'm trying to more and more, but it's, it's, it's an old guy. So.
What, fifty years old?
From what Jeff says, it's, it's getting there.
Regardless whether we approve this or not, we're going to have to get new pumps to go with it?
I don't think so. I don't think so. I think if we get that new, the, the new pump, I'm trying to figure out what Jeff did in these, because like I said, I wasn't out there, but from what I'm understanding, we could use the old pumps, but I still think we need to get new checks on that. And then we could take those out, get them refurbished, and then we have a whole new set of, or, you know, used, new set of checks.
From what Jeff told me, the pumps were, the pumps were okay. The problem is the valves and that. You, some, some valves you can't even.
The valve, the north valve, you can't even shut it.
You can't even close it.
I'm afraid I was going to break it with a big pipe wrench.
Yeah, you got a bath getting this, somebody got a bath getting this fixed, didn't they?
Steven and I did, yeah.
Yep.
And problems with the controllers. We're wanting to get new controllers because.
Old, I guess. It just, I, I, like I said, without Jeff being.
No, I don't think that they're.
Let's talk about it next meeting.
And I can get the pictures and everything too.
We're trying to get some more, uh.
I don't think that if they were actually inspected that they would.
Estimates on this.
Next meeting.
If we can get other, other estimates on it, we'll discuss this again at the next meeting, please. Is there any more discussion on this item?
I'm going to table.
Put it on to old business.
So you want two more bids, apples to apples by the next.
We need to have probably a little. At least one more. At least one more and, and a little more in depth of what all we're buying. Twenty-six thousand dollars for panel and a couple valves is expensive, I think.
That's quite a bit of change right there. Okay, any more discussion? Okay, moving on, public works supervisor, David.
I just wanted to inform you guys, let's see, we'll hold it and get there. We poured concrete today on First Street side wall. Got that taken care of. I totally forgot about it. That's my fault. Till today. Or yesterday, whenever Jamie gave me that request. But it's taken care of. As soon as it drives, we'll pull, pull the tape off.
This is the sidewalk portion right on front of Edith Sanders.
I'm walking nowhere.
Yeah, good. Thank you. All right.
You guys boarded the?
Yes.
Anybody have any questions for David? Do we need either David or Jason to stick around for the remainder of the meeting?
Street signs are going up good?
Yes. Yeah, I want to get a hold, they skipped Craig Loggins. And just put a sprinkler system in. I want to get a hold of him and see where that sprinkler line is, just so we don't have to hit it and dig up his yard. But they're, they started putting anchors in, cleared a pearl today. They'll do, as soon as we get the rest of the Christmas stuff down, they'll go back to installing signs and keep going. I'm hoping, I'm hoping in another week that we'll be on the south end of town. And I, Dale and Casey have been working on it together. Pulling posts and setting new ones and doing anchors and stuff.
Any more questions? Do we need them to stick around for him at the time? No. Okay, gentlemen, you can leave if you need to. All right, moving on, grant administrator. Do you hear anything?
I've talked with Lisa a little bit. The state tried getting a hold of her when, when they were all on Christmas. And they weren't in the beginning stage, and I think I did it, I administered the board. That's all we heard from them. We're still waiting on state.
All right. Anybody have any questions to pass on to Lisa? Okay, moving on. Chief Adams.
Just two things. One, the policy manual's finished. So I guess to get you guys' approval on the new policy manual for the department. And Officer Perez is back, so we're back to two of us out, so that's all I got.
Anybody have any questions for Chief? Nothing?
New truck looks good.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, we were supposed to get the graphics. We're going to go on tomorrow. They made it as far as the great bend. And Michelle called me and they got rerouted back to South Dakota, so they won't be back in Kansas until Saturday. So maybe next week we'll finally get some graphics on it.
And then back to work. Do we need to approve that?
I don't know. I've never had this, you could false the book. I've never had a police chief do a false report.
I don't have one.
Well, I wasn't even.
Are you happy with policy book? I mean, I'm not reading through that stack of stuff that I'm nothing about.
I mean, the thing about the policy book, it's not just a policy of what can't be done. It's actually a procedure manual also. So the nice thing about it is, is that when we hire somebody new and they haven't been to the academy, they can actually read through that and they'll have a pretty good idea of what to do on calls. Generally speaking, you know, they're still going to have questions, but it, it does have a very good guideline. I mean, it covers everything from vehicle maintenance and care, uniforms, line of duty deaths, injury prevention. I put everything in there, so maybe about eight months worth of typing, but finally we got it all done and, and everything's finished. But it's really a good book. So I, I, there's really not many holes.
I did not peruse it. I glanced through it. But I did, everybody should take a look at it because there's a lot of good work in it. So take a look at it. It's pretty well put together.
Is the chief, is this something that's uniform with other like cities?
Well, Stafford's interim chief came over, heard I had gotten it finished, so he came over and looked at it. He liked it, asked if he could adopt it through their city, so. That there is, is about a fifteen thousand dollar policy right there that I typed up just for us. So it's very good, yeah, and it, it covers a lot and it, it talks about a lot, so.
Well, you report if you had ninety-one cases, so that's a case. Every four days, so you had time.
Well, we have plenty of time to read it.
The police department can't have a policy that overrules the city's handbook.
Yeah, nothing in there.
It's basically what the fire department done a couple years ago with their policies and procedures.
Now, that, yeah, because this book here doesn't hold to anything per the city. That is strictly a law enforcement. How we do our investigations, what, how you do your paperwork, what gets turned in, all that. Nothing has to do with sick leave in there. The injury prevention is just basically for officers to get educated on how not to get hurt at work. But as far as anything for the, the city on pay, health insurance, nothing like that's in that thing. It's strictly a law enforcement, policy and procedure.
Good.
Well done. I don't have a problem looking through it, but I don't want to hold up approving it if it's something that works for them.
Yeah, and it's open for anytime you guys want to read it or look through it or have questions.
I've looked through the table contents and it looks like it's pretty well complete.
I'd make a motion to approve the police department policy and procedure manual.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Put your hand up.
I, I just think.
I want to.
I wouldn't like to just glance through.
Yeah.
I mean. I'm sure it's great. I just.
We just, I, I wanted to have it done by the first of the year and try to get it completed, so I mean, somebody's wanting to read.
There's nothing wrong with that.
Yeah, I haven't looked at it. I have no idea about it, so.
So Ross and.
Yeah, I would, that's what I was going to say, is I was trying to stop before we voted. I'd like to, if I could take a copy or, or take that one and keep it for a day or do I got to read it here or check it out?
Library, library.
I'm not going to read it from the back.
Motion has been rescinded to give us enough time to look through this, so everyone is on the same page. And will I?
Who made the motion when it seconded?
He, he made the motion. He seconded.
Okay, so it can't be rescinded. It's on the table.
Well, then it failed three to two, or two to three.
Yeah, I wasn't voting out. I was, I guess I was trying to ask the question.
Or put two vote, I don't care, whatever you want to do.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor? Okay, motion fails. We will put this on the agenda. It'll be here in the office, Jamie? Can we?
I can lay it down here.
Okay, for everyone to take a look at, and we'll discuss this at the next meeting.
Okay.
Great, thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for our chief? Okay, moving on, fire chief, Michael.
I don't have anything.
All right, anybody have any questions for Michael? Okay, moving on to city administrator, Jamie.
Eighteen days. I have nothing.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Jamie?
Joyce still coming in some?
She hasn't been in with the holidays and her, her dad. Pam and I have been discussing a little bit more of a set schedule of when we'll need her and how long are we gone and all of that. So we'll be getting a hold of Joyce and making sure she's available for those days.
Maybe having her come in a little before you're gone, or before you're officially gone?
Yeah.
Or a little more, I guess.
Yeah. She, yeah.
Anything else for Jamie? Okay, moving on, city attorney, John.
Yeah, I'll just do real quick. One of your officers stopped a habitual violator, which means he's received enough traffic citations and charges against his record that he's kind of an elevated violator. Anyway, this is his fourth time. If convicted his mandatory jail sentence is ninety days, which is going to cost the city about five or six thousand dollars. So I just wanted to give you a heads up.
I did, I did talk. Jamie talked to me today. I did talk over there. I should know something tomorrow. I should know tomorrow if county will, will take that and dismiss ours and go through county in that way. The jail time then come out of us.
Okay.
So.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
What happens if he doesn't take it?
Then we have to take it.
And.
I think Mandy just keeps sending.
We sell Tori's new pickup and. Yeah.
Because I'm assuming you don't have funds set aside for ninety days in jail?
No, we don't, we don't have, that's the thing is, is, that's the, the long projected goal is, is we actually, we, we've got to come up with some money for the dog pound. Now that we are in our court, that was the one thing I looked at, but it was just not feasible to throw in for this year. But we have got to look to the future since we're holding our own court now. If we do have to put somebody in jail and all of that, we have to have all of, we have been very lucky. There's a lot of things we're gonna, we need to look at changing for our.
That was a concern when the county attorney took, quit taking.
Ninety tickets later, uh-huh.
Quit taking over any of the cases and prosecuting anything is.
I myself.
Cost us money to enforce stuff.
And I, you know, if there's a way, and I understand we have certain limits to where we can go, but if there's a way, we can start holding more in our court, just means that we have more, you know, if somebody's on, gets a diversion, if somebody, you know.
You can create some.
Pays the fines, we can, we can help self-sustain it, but we've, we're just going to have to sit down and buckle down and start somewhere. And it's, it's going to hurt at the first, but then it's going, it'll level itself out, you know, for what our, our traffic is in here for court. But we're, we're going to have to figure something out, yeah, definitely through the court. I mean, it's just the way it is. I mean, now that we're going to have to hold it. You know, we don't have a marijuana ordinance. We don't have paraphernalia ordinance. Two simplest little things. We don't have any of those that we can, you know, take care of. I mean, we need to get, we need to get those ordinances done, noise ordinance, just different things like that. So all of court needs to be revamped and we need to look at the funding if we do have to put somebody in jail. That's just the necessary evil of having your own court. However, that went down before I was here, that's what went down, but I'm just.
We were basically told that they weren't handling anything unless it was a felony and disreported.
Yeah, so.
Just the same person.
Yeah, we're just going to have to sit down. We've got to change some things through the court wise to, to hear some of those in order to report things. I mean, I've been working with Jamie. We went to a training over at the Annex on, on how we, how we do things, but we're going to have to have disposition sheets. That way people can be fingerprinted after court because if we hear them here and it's a misdemeanor and they get convicted, then they've never been fingerprinted. If we just wrote them a ticket like this case and then they went, well then, nothing gets turned into the state. So, you know, we're, we're fixing that to where we're getting things reported that need to be, so, but it's, it's a process.
And the alleged defenses.
The alleged defense driving on revoked. For this, driving on revoked, fourth time.
Being taken.
Yeah.
Well, so the money that you guys get for court costs and fines and tickets and all that, you guys can't use that money? That doesn't go into a court account?
Now, the court account, I don't have any control. I don't, I don't see how much is in there. I don't know anything about that. So, yeah, I couldn't answer, I can't answer question one on what, what tickets bring in.
And stuff go back into the general fund?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, unless Jamie says somebody doesn't pay. I mean, I, my job's done once they admit guilt and they're sentenced.
I will have you all know that 2019 is submitted to the state.
But there's a lot of, lot of things we've got to fix if we're going to hold it and do it right here that, you know, there's just some, some stuff that's got to be fixed in here. So, but we'll, we'll get to work on that. I just.
If the county doesn't go forth with it and take it over, I mean, what would be your plan if this happened again? Like, what, do you have any plan that you, as far as putting it into?
No, really, we don't because I, you know, looking forward to, to what my budget was last year to just getting the budget to where it was in 2018, wasn't adding in anything for a court cost. Because I don't, I don't do, you know, the sheriff has a slush fund and a reserve fund and all of that that they pay for the jail. So when we arrest somebody and they go, that comes out of there. But as far as sentencing and stuff like that that they go, if it goes through here, then we're going to end up having to pay for it. But, I mean, if I was to turn in a budget, for one, the hard thing is figuring out a budget of having that money to the side because we don't have a constant current coming in, you know, it's going to be that one time. So if you ask for a little bit, then you go over and you don't have any money to pay for it, you're done. But then if I come to the council and I ask for twenty thousand dollars in jail fund, you know, that's going to freak some people out and I get, you know, and then where do you get the twenty thousand dollars from? You know, another thing just to set aside, so. I mean, that's new to me. We're going to have to figure it out, I think, just because we are taking our, over our own court.
If twenty-six thousand is too much to keep our toilets flushing, the relationship for five thousand for somebody driving on a revoked license, isn't that a little bit absurd and cost?
That's, that's the Kansas legislature. And that's the problem is, city has no, no control.
Yeah, it's not the city's choice on whether or not.
We could not write the ticket.
We could. I could dismiss it.
We, we could. I could dismiss it.
You can dismiss the ticket. I mean, seriously.
I guess we could slash it.
I booked the light bar.
That's, that's why my email about eleven o'clock last night.
My toilet flushing might be more important to me than somebody driving on a revoked.
Oh, boy. When I looked at that and I turned to my wife and I said, I've got a fourth time offender habitual violator, she says, that's ninety days.
Crap.
I mean, seriously, cost benefit.
Yeah.
Okay, chief, just if we just.
Keep us up, Jamie. We'll figure it out.
Try and get it squared away.
It'll be fine.
All right, great.
No problem.
Good time to have that discussion.
Okay, anything else, John?
Uh, I think that's it.
Okay, uh, under old business, anybody have any, uh, questions, comments regarding any of the topics there?
I guess just the, any more updates on the truck?
We're gonna get it twenty twenty and twenty twenty-two.
Give you what I have for them.
Well. All right, unless there's any questions or comments regarding old business, move on to new. Okay, new business, cleaning contract.
That's something we do every year and this is just like a renewal. That was a very intense cleaning contract. I'm impressed.
Any problems? No reason to not continue.
Can we make a motion? We gotta approve that?
Yeah.
Make a motion to continue with Schultz, Schultz cleaning. Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Jim, are you with us today?
I'm with you.
You did?
I did.
Raise his hand slightly.
Are you awake?
No.
Okay, gap resolution.
That's the yearly revision that we do at the beginning of the year for our financial.
Do I have any questions regarding this?
Standard thing as well?
Yeah.
What is the?
Twenty twenty-one.
Make a motion to approve, uh, resolution twenty twenty dash.
One.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Okay, next item is rec agreement.
So, then moved out. Um, I just kind of redid what we had and took out the wit center of everything, but I also added in, um, you know, the question of who's supposed to winterize, who's supposed to do this came up. And I just put in there that the city would take care of everything. So, we know that it is getting taken care of and it's being done correctly. And we don't have to worry about the frozen pipes or anything else.
Is the rec commission okay with that agreement or have they seen it?
I think I sent a picture.
So, what is it? What is the agreement? I guess I don't understand what the agreement is for them now, just for them to use.
Basically, the ball field.
Basically, everything that was in the one except for the wit center.
What about the utilities? Were there utility from the other there?
Yeah, it was all left in there.
Yeah, and then they'll, they'll have to, I don't know their agreement with their current tenant, so, I mean, they'll have to either pay him or he's gonna pay him or put the utilities in their name, so.
But they're paying the utilities on the ball field. And then the rent was for the wit center building?
So, we'll be, we won't get any more rent because they were out thirty-first, so.
That was until you guys, I think we should look into after the Ben does the carpet and stuff about leasing that room back out to somebody. If somebody wants to take it, otherwise it's the, somebody on my, who's been there that's taking care of the senior center. If we can get money out of it, once it's done, it's gonna have a new carpet.
Yeah, I'm not doing it later. If, if somebody, yeah. We're, we're gonna, or you'll be handling, I guess, the wit center then as far as exercise class or Alison.
I don't think any of that stuff's gonna be in there.
It's all gonna be our.
I think so.
Where'd they move?
Tom Warner's building, south of the annex.
Where we thought they were going.
So.
I just didn't see anything in minutes about, uh, this term.
In there a minute?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would probably leave out the, uh, city would be responsible for winterizing and maintaining the facilities and bathrooms. I would leave out. I think you make that their responsibility. That's the way, you know, the city owns the football field. School takes care of that. If they want it, they can, they can do some dumb stuff. City is, city staff, you know, staff are rec, rec commission. Takes care of their baseball field, winterizes, takes care of it.
But do we do our own winterizing on the, on these now? Like, does the city do the cars?
Haven't, yeah.
But that's my only concern is if it runs past them and they freeze and it ends up.
Is it their problem or our problem?
That's what we need to figure out.
I think, I think probably cornrow park, we need to maintain it.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree.
But the ball field, yeah, but I mean, it says, because doesn't it still give them the facilities and bathrooms? That's, if, if you take that completely out, that's saying that we aren't taking care of the ones down at cornrow park.
I'm just saying the ball field up there, you know, they, they wanna take responsibilities, that, where does it stop, you know? Oh, someone broke a toilet, you come fix it. No, that's, that's your baby, you know? As far as I'm concerned.
Do we own the, the house and the, I mean, we own all that?
They're gonna say the toilet's leaking, causing us to pay a high water bill.
Then maybe the contract needs to make them responsible for the whole entire ball field.
Cause if I'm a landlord and something's wrong with my house, I call the landlord.
You know, you know the definition of a landlord is pays rent, right?
Right. It's leased to them or.
I think those are squatter rights.
Well, I mean, they're, I, I don't know who, you know, back years ago.
And I mean, we can change it if you want them to pay rent to use the fields.
Who paid for the lights? Who paid for the, you know, like, I mean, stuff like that, you know? You know what I mean?
I don't, I think you're probably right. I think the, the ball field needs to be spelled out a little better in the contract. If we're gonna make them responsible for it, then you'd be aware that they're responsible for the whole thing.
They've got an eighty-some thousand dollar budget and maybe they should step up.
That's what I'm saying. Maybe they should be a hundred percent responsible for it. I think you, you take cornrow park and go ahead and let our guys winterize in bathrooms though.
Yeah, you bet. Yeah, cornrow park's totally on us. I just, I mean, this, what's the city gonna do up the ball field, the baseball field? Nothing. You know, it's gonna be totally the rec. Why doesn't the rec just absorb it, take care of it? I think they can. I think they can do that. It'd be the least that they could do is to cover all of that for themselves if they're the ones primarily using it.
Well, if they're gonna remodel it and do all that work to that field, then why would they not just take responsibility for the rest of the stuff on the property?
Exactly.
Well, John, help me rework it.
Okay, all right, put that on.
I guess let us know from that wit center. I guess, I mean, that'll be skating and birthday parties entirely. I mean. Primarily, primarily, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Like, they're still, the rec, or the after-school program goes there and then I think, um.
That's kinda through the school.
Yeah, but Dayton asked about something with Wednesdays with the, so I don't know if the rec is in charge of like their activities on Wednesdays because they were going to the rec or the wit center and I told them that was completely fine. So.
The life after-school program?
Mm-hmm. That's the way he talked, but maybe they have a after-school.
I don't know about, I don't know if they have their own after-school group, but the, uh, life, uh, after-school, they do their own, um, activities, I guess you could say, so.
I guess what I was meaning is now that they're out, they don't even have a key to the wit center. Maybe that's the way I should say it.
I got the keys. They're, yeah.
You know, we might want, you know, after everything gets.
Well, I got Dayton's keys.
Said and done.
Whoever else has keys, I'm not sure.
Right.
And everything it's been, uh, we've, when, uh, Ben is finished, we start actively looking for someone to maybe rent out that, uh, small section, see what we can do, so. Okay, all right, we'll put that on, uh, old business.
The Ego Devo has three offices for rent right now, too.
Right.
I mean.
All right, let's see here. Um, we talked a little bit about First Street Sidewalk. David had brought that up. Um, let's see, department head spending authority.
So, I would like to request David and Jason have spending authority, um, regarding their, their own departments. I want to see them coding their own invoices and stepping up and taking a little bit more responsibility of their own departments. But with that, I believe needs to come spending authority so they can make those decisions of.
What is their spending authority?
None.
And what would you suggest of you?
I mean, we tried five hundred for the fire department and that's just.
You can't buy anything for five hundred dollars.
I, I think a thousand would be.
Is a thousand enough?
Mine's a thousand.
Do, do we give them a thousand and let her approve up to a certain amount if it's above? A thousand?
How are, I mean, not to be dumb, but like the cold patches that are on here, that, I assume that's David's department? Who, who, so you're approving that?
I did.
Okay.
You know, I mean, that's the thing. If she's actually, we've never really told her what she can and can't approve.
Yeah.
Give them a.
I mean, it, it's stupid to give them a thousand dollars and they need fifteen hundred. Well, she's not even authorized to approve that per se. Cause we haven't really said anything.
So, give them the spending of authority of a thousand and anything over that pending approval of Jamie, the city administrator.
I guess, I mean, I'm not opposed to it.
Anybody else have any suggestions on that?
You're just trying to relinquish the responsibility, having to tell them we can go spend a hundred dollars.
Well, they, so with, with each.
I think how it works now is basically Jeff has always approved everything.
Correct.
Because he's got a four thousand dollar spending limit, I believe.
Two thousand.
Two thousand?
With the changes, um, and, and each department head focusing on, or with each person focusing on the three departments that we've split up, Jeff has done it all, but I would like to see Jason and David be coding their invoices, following their budget, be more
Just fully responsible.
Involved with their departments. I mean, that's, that was part of the discussion of.
So, they're all three running on a two thousand dollar budget right now?
Jeff has two thousand, the other two.
Jeff has two thousand, the others have not.
Jeff has two.
So, they're all three running on Jeff's budget?
Alan and I have one.
Two thousand.
His authority.
Why don't you, what would be wrong with giving them the same authority that Jeff had?
I think you're right. I think give them two thousand across the board and then prior or anything above that needs to be approved through Jamie.
And you, and your approval limit is?
She doesn't have one.
What thousand?
Cause we never changed it.
I'm just gonna say one thousand. Say anything more, just kinda James, I mean.
Well, I'm fine with that, but you're gonna have to get her, I mean, because right now if you say, if you don't put a limit on it, she could say, yeah, you can spend ten thousand dollars.
Right. So. She's never had a limit.
Right, you know, I mean, I think we need to set a deal that if it's above, say, four thousand dollars, it needs to be brought to council. Cause I mean, I think that, that pump for the swimming pool was thirty-eight hundred dollars. I, I believe you approved that to go ahead and order it because it was one of the deals we had to have it, you know, middle of summer and pump's going out, we gotta have one here. Now, we approved it at council meeting, but, so I think she needs to have some authority to go a certain limit. I don't know if four thousand's being reserved, ten thousand or.
I'll have McBrian on a thousand and anything above that to her.
Yeah, but then what is her?
But you need to.
Authority.
Because otherwise, if you just say you can spend whatever by your authority, you may come into a twenty thousand dollar bill and say, what's this? Because we didn't approve it. She said, well, I did though.
Jamie, what do you feel comfortable with, with this thing, allowance of something that you don't necessarily probably know anything about in their field? I mean, if they come to you and say, we really gotta have this, it's for six thousand dollars.
That's why you guys get five emails a week. Um, if I had, like, if it was the swimming pool thing, more research would be done and I would look into it more, but, I mean, that, that's a rock and a hard spot because I have five, uh, five bosses, six bosses sitting around the table, so, and everyone's opinions are highly different, so.
Let's say most of the time, you know, when, when Jeff's spending order was two thousand dollars, it, it went along pretty good. I mean, he just brought something to council every time he did something about that, you know, I would just, I don't know, I guess think about department head's thousand, Jamie, two thousand, I mean.
I guess my question is, is what are you comfortable signing the check for at the end of the month? That you really did authorize? I mean, I, two thousand is not unreasonable because, you know, anybody that's running machinery at all, it's, you can't get anything dead for two thousand.
I don't think the increase in Jeff's under, like, I mean, some of the stuff he has to order with meter, just even meters and stuff like that. But I guess that's one transaction, I don't think, so.
I mean, what I like about it is the guys, when they go to order something above a thousand dollars, they keep you in the loop. And then you can keep us in the loop. Three emails. That's what I like about that idea.
But that, I mean, that's.
A thousand and two thousand for the, I mean, Jeff's already at two, but put the other two at a thousand and if it's above that, she can approve up to two thousand?
I think that would be the fair thing to do.
Can also go one way and see what works and adjust accordingly. Two thousand's on that.
That's what I'm saying. Just give David and Jason a thousand dollar spending limit.
We, we can't be way off if the whole thing was two thousand and then we jump it to four and six. I mean, we gotta be close relatively. So, I think a thousand's plenty.
Right, for.
For, for Jason and, and David.
Yeah, I, I'm fine with that, but do we give her up to two thousand?
Yeah.
And you know, if they need something that's fifteen hundred, she could approve it up to two thousand?
And then if it's over that, bring it to council.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a starting point.
I mean, most of the stuff that you get.
Okay, council, so you're okay with, uh, granting a thousand spending limit to David and Jason and giving authority to approve up to two thousand for Jamie?
Needs to be in the motion.
Yeah.
I guess with the department, put down department heads, one thousand, administrator, two thousand. Just leave it at that.
Are we changing Jeff's two thousand then?
Jeff's not technically a department head.
Not a department head.
Okay. Okay.
Is that motion?
Seven.
So, who are you, are you going to designate who your department heads are? Is that P D, Jason?
Well, P D and fire already have a thousand dollar spending limit. So, the only two that's added is Jason and David.
All right, perfect.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the table. Anybody have any other questions? All in favor? Motion carries. All right, okay, we're gonna move into, uh, land bank, so, you know, end this regular meeting of council.
We'll call the land bank meeting to order, and I think Carolyn just walked in.
Wow, the work ethic.
Yeah.
I'm, I don't know if you, you had, you wanted to just kinda refer to me for questions or if.
Um, it's whatever. Um, so Carolyn's working on writing a grant for some housing. It's whatever. So Carolyn's working on writing a grant for some housing in St. John. What she's looking at is to see if the city land bank would be willing to donate, and I told her, as far as I'm concerned, pending the grant, one or two pieces of property that the land bank owns to have residential structures built on it.
Yes, and that's very much what we, we would ask for a contingent on a grant approval. We don't wanna necessarily hold land, but we don't have the means to develop. But in order to make a compelling grant request, we need to show, you have to, it's very much a part of the application, is showing where the sites are, the fact that you've got, you know, site control, which can be an option, an option to acquire contingent on certain factors, which would be the grant. But, you know, it's, it's a fifteen page checklist of, of things that we would have to go through, including things I can work with either John or Jamie on, like illustrating that it's properly zoned. Well, anything that we're talking about is clearly in a residential zone, but we'll have to document that. And so site, the actual site is an important part of being able to make the application. So, what this grant application to is to the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation. It's called the Home Program, and what we would be requesting funding to do is to build single family homes as rental properties. So, it would, you know, kind of follow the design that we've been working with, with Kansas State University over the past few months. You know, it, it's a separate project that we're working with them on in a, in a design. It's a design-build project with their fifth year's architecture students. They have spent the fall semester coming up with a design that kind of meets the challenge, which we've told them is to, we gotta figure out how to build housing in rural areas. It's not just St. John, you know, that kind of is what makes their research, I think, relevant, is that it, you know, it's not something unique to our community, but we've gotta find a way in rural areas to build housing that is affordable in the kinds of incomes that we have here, which, you know, median income in Stafford County's forty-seven thousand. And, you know, we've worked with several different, you know, ways of trying to crack that nut. And, you know, a lot of what is considered affordable, moderate income housing in other areas to build is still not affordable in this area for those kinds of incomes, you know, new, new construction at a hundred and eighty thousand is either not affordable or a risk that a lot of people don't wanna take when comps for housing, you know, aren't at that level by and large around here. So, we have told them, if you can bring that price point of construction closer to a hundred thousand, we think we can find some ways to make that work more readily, which is a challenge, you know? Getting new construction at that price point is, you know, a design challenge. So, they've, they've been to St. John, I think, it's either three or four times. We've had some focus groups, we've also shared some of their preliminary designs on Facebook and really tried to solicit feedback to make it something that, I don't know, people would find appealing here. Some of those kinds of feedback are not practical for us to be able to incorporate everything, you know? That's part of the, the challenge with new construction, too, is that when you incorporate all the wants into a design, then it quickly exceeds the price point you're trying to target. So, for example, it does not have an attached garage and it doesn't have a basement. So, those are two things that I know a lot of people like, but it doesn't, and that's part of how we're trying to get to the price point that we're looking for. And, and again, these are rental houses, too, that's the program that we're targeting, it's, it's for rental housing. There is a provision that you can convert if you have someone that fits the income guidelines that they stipulate. There are ways that it, they, you can give people the option to buy it, but if we just, you know, did rental housing, I know we're meeting a need there, too. I had somebody in my office just today talking about looking for rental housing and it's...
How many, how many bedrooms is this house?
This is three bedrooms and two baths.
And what, what would the rent cost on it?
It would be on a scale that considers income, but at eighty percent of, of median income, it would probably be about, what'd we say, five hundred? I mean, I, I made an applica, I haven't finalized this application in total. I wrote an application for the same concept to Federal Home Loan Bank last summer, we didn't get funded. We'll try again in the coming summer, but generally, we'll save an average of about five, five hundred twenty-five a month.
That's three bedroom, thousand square feet if I remember correctly.
Right.
I think a thousand ninety, or a thousand eighty?
Thousand eighty and a hundred.
This one's, yeah.
Kyle, where's a hundred thousand amortized thirty?
You don't have to look at Kyle. I can tell you, it's, it's gonna be in the four hundred, depending on...
You can amortize a hundred thousand for a hundred a month, thirty years.
Right. That doesn't count your insurance or your, it's, well, it's actually gonna be closer to five hundred if you're, if you're not looking at a twenty percent down. So, there's, there's several, you know, different variables in that, you know? How much are you putting down, and all that kind of stuff, but, so, five twenty-five a month, that doesn't count our cost of insurance or taxes. I mean, when I say for the am... When they're paying that for rent, they're probably not paying the market rate that you would, you would have to consider if you were building equity, buying it, paying the full cost of taxes and insurance, I guess is another way of looking at that. You know, so we're getting this go, you know, we, when you've got grant funding, you've got a little bit more of the ability. Plus, it is intended to serve a lower income population, that's part of what these programs do.
Three bedroom open floor plan.
Brand new house for five hundred dollars, I mean...
So we, we battled that idea of, well, what is affordable, you know? I mean, sure, you could put this in Wichita and you'd be getting probably close to a thousand, or maybe even more, I don't know. But we gotta balance it with what is in line with what the rent is in the city, too.
What a school teacher could afford.
Exactly. Grain elevator, you know, employee, police officer. You've been hiring for police officers recently, that was actually one of the things that I put in the application to Federal Home Loan Bank as an example of the kind of housing we needed to be able to, to have available. So, anyway, this would be an application for just four houses, and they wouldn't all be in St. John. We do have, for example, a lot in Hudson, a group of individuals in Hudson along with Flower Mill kicked in some money, their community club kicked in some money, but they collectively paid to buy a dilapidated house and tear it down in Hudson. So we'll have that lot, and it was obviously brought to us by, you know, some civic interest, too. So, if we get the grant, one of them will go there, but two to three would go here in St. John. So, the lot at First and Monroe, I think, would accommodate two houses, and I think, you know, it's right there next to another duplex. I think in terms of kind of city planning type of thing, I think that it fits the neighborhood, perhaps. And the second location we would consider is the one on South Broadway that was recently donated to the land bank in December, I believe. If we could, if we could work with the grant to use both lots and see what we get in terms of funding, we'd probably work with First and Monroe as the first choice. If we have enough funding to do more, we would consider the idea of Broadway, South Broadway.
Are you wanting to take the, take the land when the grant's approved, or when you know for sure that the building is gonna go on their house? Or, i- if the grant's approved, it's for sure go, you're building it?
If we get, if we get grant funding, we'll, we'll want to...
It'll be contingent on getting the grant.
And, so, some of the variables, though, getting grant funding, for example, I worked with the city of Stafford over the past year, past few months, to write an application from their land bank's perspective. The full application was two hundred and fifty thousand, but when they were reviewing, they called and they said, we don't have enough to give everyone the full funding. If we gave you a hundred and twenty-five thousand, would you still be able to do part of what you wanna do? And we all said, yeah, sure, we'll, we'll work with that, that's better than nothing. So, I leave those kinds of things open to the possibility, you know?
What, what are you applying?
The application...
You already applied?
Yeah, and now I'm starting to focus on it right now, the applications due February seventh.
And then when would you know by? I mean, calendar year?
Oh, yeah, in a couple of months, I hope, by summer for sure.
So I guess the big question is, is, is the land bank willing to contingent on her getting the grant, willing to donate those properties?
What, the requirements, Carolyn, for like, all the land, I mean, they're gonna come out in like soil samples, or we're not liable for anything on the, you hear all these big rules of, they come out in core sample and...
They will do an environmental assessment.
Yeah, I don't wanna have anything to do with that.
Well, that's the why, you know, you don't have a housing authority, that's why we got us, I guess. I mean, we're taking the responsibility for that, and it's not fun, I'll tell you, I mean, so, I, I might run, I would like that house demolished before we have any ownership of it, I mean, in question, the sooner the better.
Is there a downside? I don't see a downside.
No, I just don't wanna make, I mean, I guess I don't wanna be on the hook if...
Yeah, I'd agree with you.
If they get this and they move ahead and then she says, we gotta dig out six feet of dirt, we gotta haul in fresh or whatever, I mean, I, I mean, you think of all the freaky weird things that can happen, we all know it, I mean, I'm just trying to think of all the loopholes or the possibilities.
Before construction will be allowed to happen, they will do an environmental assessment.
Okay.
And that's on you.
And I suppose that, yeah, I mean, I suppose if they come in and they say, well, you gotta do five hundred thousand dollars of mediation, that's when we say, sorry, we won't build here.
Okay, that's, that's what I was going after, I guess.
But, my experience is, is that it's easier if the demolition has occurred before any thing.
I would imagine that'll be gone before you would ever take control of it, anyway.
Definitely, we will, I, I'll just say, we won't take this decision.
No, I'm saying that, I, I think the...
It would be even better if it was even before the grant application is formally submitted.
Well, I don't know if that's gonna happen.
So, the sooner the better.
Possibly this month, still a long process of stuff to get through, so...
I'd say there's about forty other pieces of property that we have to, like, have to acquire and build different houses.
Right.
Can I hire you now that you're getting off?
John, do we need to make a consensus, okay?
Land bank has absolute authority, it's something they wanna do, how they, how they do it with the properties in the land banks. A motion to donate the properties to Stafford County Economic Development, subject to...
Contingent on the grant money.
Approval, and I can't remember what the grant name's called, but...
And with that, does, does John and Jamie, do they have the authority to develop the documents required for this? So like, I, I, I think it will probably be best in the form of an, of an option contract.
Yeah, we can put something together, it wouldn't take very long, it wouldn't be very difficult.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with any of this, I think it's, it's a good idea, so...
It's February what?
Mine's done.
So we just have to make a motion to, on contingent on the grant money to donate the properties to the economic development?
So, she wants an agreement, so why don't you just direct me to prepare the agreement and then...
We can approve it when it's ready.
We can approve it next meeting, that work, Carolyn?
Yeah, you have, next meet, oh, yeah, next meeting is in two weeks, so that's sure.
So is that what you guys would like John to do?
Yeah.
I don't see a downside, other than the timeframe, getting the house going down.
Oh, yeah.
So I've got the legals.
We're talking about, what did you say about tearing the houses down, the group of people are not ready to do it yet? I don't think it'll be done by, it, it might be. I, I think working towards it closer to the end of this month, yes, of getting started on them, I, but I can't...
We could obviously go there first.
We could. I'm, I'm hoping that when this all gets finalized, as far as tearing the houses down, that it's all done within a matter of a week and a half or two weeks.
If I had the ability to take a photo of the site that didn't have a house on it...
Photoshop.
You could take a picture of the east side.
Photoshop.
Take a picture of a football field with a grass there and we'll put that on there.
Well, we'll work, we have to work with it, not that I'm going to forge things, but we'll, we'll figure out a strategy that...
The, you're talking about putting two houses on one lot, so there would have to be some, a lot split, and you and I talked about that. Okay, maybe you didn't talk about that.
No, we're talking, that was a different lot that we're splitting.
We wouldn't have to split that lot?
We're, we're not selling the houses.
But we discovered that, is what I'm saying.
Well, we aren't selling these houses, we're using them as rentals, and by one entity, you know, which would be...
Yeah, but I think it says one, I'll have to review that, it was only, it, we're limited to one residential structure or lot.
I'm gonna be able to tell you all about zoning here.
Okay, well...
That's just that kind of thing.
No, I don't think so, no.
No, but that's just something we need to check before, before you're...
That's more than residential.
For what it's worth, to be able to, to be able to completely... Well, it says, is site properly zoned for the proposed development, attached documentation? I guess it's, it's obviously residential zone, but if there's an additional element of the zoning that stipulates...
It may have to do with yard size and that kind of thing, so we'll have to think about that.
Okay.
You might need a zoning variance, but could that be done?
Yes, that could be done very easily.
Cause you got duplexes next to it, so you could get a zoning variance to just extend.
Let's just apply for that before it happens.
Definitely before construction occurs, obviously, but I'm just thinking through what is necessary to, to satisfy the requirements of the application. And I think the way this is worded is it's zoned properly, it is residential, I think we can address just that part of it, knowing that if we choose to actually develop two houses on one lot, that we need to go through an application process before actually constructing.
Or should I wait, I'll wait to see what you get and what we need to do. But I have it here that it's residential and utilities are readily available.
We gotta have motion, then.
We just direct John to...
Why we are in the land bank, can someone tell me what, how the land bank was set up? Like, what, what entity is the land bank?
What do you mean?
Like, if I were to open up a checking account that we discussed...
It's a governmental entity.
So, do we have a...
Tax ID number? No, it's probably just on the cities.
So, it's okay to run it under the cities?
I would assume so, but...
I thought that's a, the word we're trying to avoid.
What?
It, it's having its own account without any tax...
Yeah, if she's gonna put it under account, she's just gonna put it under that tax ID number.
Yes. The, the issue was, was people wanted to know if they donated money to the St. John Land Bank, that it went in a checking account that was run by the land bank and not in the general fund of the city.
Right.
That is the whole point of having a land bank checking account.
I attempted the pro, I, I wanted to make sure I had the right documentation going over to start everything.
I mean, it, we did it, it's just an, an ordinance, it is.
Okay.
I mean, I, I don't, off the top of my head, but it's like, Saint John Land Bank, I mean, there's a proper name and everything.
Okay.
It's in the ordinance, so.
Okay, I'll go, I'll look at that ordinance and take it. I think the ordinance would-
Just email me once, I'm sure she's got it on her computer, she's done it a bunch of times.
Okay, I should, cause I was basically, when I said I didn't think we had a number, if we run it through the city, then they obviously have all of that.
So, you don't have to register with, like, the Secretary of State's office?
No, I don't think we did on this one, because it's a, it was council and mayor.
I think if you break it out, outside of council and mayor run, you're gonna have to do a bunch more. If you had outside citizens on it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I haven't looked at it long enough to, to kinda think about that, but, I mean, it, it, it can certainly be developed as a completely separate entity.
Just wanted to make sure, so I can complete that tomorrow.
Where can we discuss with Carolyn on the industrial park? Is it here, or we, we have to do it in the regular meeting? Discussion on the industrial park?
Well, that's city-owned property, that's not land bank-owned property, I believe.
I mean, while she's here, like, we brought it up at the last meeting.
We done with the land bank?
Yeah.
Do you want to get longer than the land bank portion of meeting, and, I don't know, do you have citizen comments following or something? I mean, I don't-
We can amend the agenda. Okay, I need a mo, if we're done with land bank, I need a motion to-
So, move to adjourn.
Got a motion, second, all in favor? Carries. Land Bank's adjourned.
Reopen this regular council meeting.
Make a motion to amend the agenda, to add, um, discussion about the industrial park with economic development.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries.
Carolyn, we, we have that land out there, you know, we just brought it up briefly at the last meeting. It was, uh, I can't remember how many acres it is, I mean, it's over ten acres out there. Is there anything that you can do that we can work with you to get somebody out there? I know you have your hands, hands busy right now.
Yeah.
But, I mean, we're willing to do what we have to, as far as getting roads and taking out their sewer, electric and all that, I mean.
Okay.
And then the, between the, those, I mean, I'd be willing to do incentives as far as, if we get a company in there manufacturing, whatever, to help with the utility bills for a little while, I'm okay with that. And then the county has the revitalization program, that's seven years, that helps them with their taxes, to help a company start from nothing to grow it.
Right.
You know? Is there, what, what is it that you could help us with? Is that something you're willing?
Oh, of course, I'm willing, it does.
It takes a ton of work.
My business and a truck park are there.
My perception is that, um, you know, if you're looking at kinda the site selection game, not necessarily working with somebody that you've already got some kind of, um, you know, like, like a local business that wants to expand, that you've kinda got already a relationship with, if you're just playing the, just, let's play a little site selection game, we would need to be more ready to go than what we are like right now. Like, the idea that the utilities are to the site, or at least that we have done the preliminary engineering to know what it would take to get the sewer out there, and what that's gonna cost, and can the city, you know, commit to that, and those kinds of things. But, I mean, I-
Well, and put yourself at R T's, though, it's hard for us to do all that investment without knowing if there's gonna be somebody out there at the same time.
I know, that's the chicken and egg dilemma, you know, yeah, for sure. You know, we, we could consider things like even designating that a TIF district, and having at least that, you know, in place that we know that that incentive's there, similar to what we did with the grocery store. Um, you know, it, it was a two-step process, or, you know, and it is a, a two-step process, we did it kinda all together, you know, like, bang, 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 with the grocery store, but you first designate a district, and then it's a separate thing than when you designate a plan for a particular development. So, one thing that you might consider is even just like, designating that a TIF district, and that would set the stage for whatever incremental taxes are collected there, can go back into the cost of paying for the infrastructure, which could be the city-owned infrastructure. In the case of the grocery store, the things that were counted as, as infrastructure included, like, the parking lot, and those, those public areas outside, outside of just the, the business of the store. But that infrastructure could also be your sewer lines, and electric lines and stuff. I think it might be helpful to think what kind of industry you're interested most in targeting, so I could take this to, you know, the extreme example, which is of course not what we are going to do in that kind of area of Saint John, but, you know, remember the Tongdon Oxy Tyson processing plant thing? You know, where they did a lot of work to bring a business there, the business says, "We wanna come," and then, "Oh, my gosh, no, we don't want them here," you know? So, if we can be kind of like, thinking through what kind of businesses we think are fit for here, you know, the kind of businesses that, you know, not at the city council level, you'd have no problem agreeing to that kind of incentive package with, or, you know, are not likely to, I don't know, get, get a lot of ire up in the public. Here's one example that kinda broke a conversation, long story short, with an executive in Kansas City, not very long, and I thought, "Ah, that would be kinda cool, it would take a lot of consensus building." But, um, he had a relationship with, um, an attorney for a real estate investment trust in Kansas City. So, what that real estate investment trust is focused on is energy developments, and, he had some interest in particular in, um, what do you call them, data centers? If that's the right term? You know, I may be throwing out an idea that, it, it hasn't been researched and stuff like that, but I'll just, I guess, work with me on the idea of what I feel like we'd have to all work through. So, a data center being the kind of place that holds a lot of servers, you know, but isn't necessarily, the reason the person thought that it might be a good fit for rural communities is that it doesn't require a lot of employers, or employees, rather, some, you know, some, and they tend to be good-paying, you know, skilled jobs, but it doesn't take a lot of people to run something like that, and so you might be able to accommodate it in a rural area. They take a lot of energy, they take a lot of electricity, so a place that would look for, you know, in their site selection process, would look for, is your electricity cheap? Well, it, I can, it's in Saint John, we are not gonna be competitive with something like that, we're not. But what if it were coupled with like, a solar field, where we could get, you know, electricity at two cents a kilowatt, or something like that? It would take a-
It's a lot of work.
It would be a lot of work, but, man, you know, and on one level, if we all said that's what we all agree is important to do, we might be able to come up with something like that.
Our resources are sun, wind, oil. We don't utilize wind energy. There's no solar, because I've had people acquire that, but there's no infrastructure to move it.
Right, so, yeah.
And, and we have an educated populace.
So, you are a utility. So, my understanding is, you could own solar panels if you wanted to.
Practice.
I don't know, Carolyn, it's just, I, it, it's a lot of work, that's why, and like, your title, economic development, I mean, I don't have the time to be dealing with this. Jamie has her stuff, that, what I was getting at with this is, and just putting it out there, like, I wanted to throw it on you, and what can we do to help you? And I see what you're saying, as far as putting something out there first, but it's hard for us to know where to run things and, you know, invest into that without knowing, too, is there's no other options, or?
Right, right, but then saying, you know, if, if you knew, for example, hey, we would like to, um, to attract that kind of business, say, you know, more, um, well, say something like that that requires electricity, you know, I don't think we're gonna be successful by just, you know, putting a real estate sign out, saying, "We've got fifteen acres that you can put a data center on." No, we're gonna have to probably a little, be a little more strategic, I guess. And I'm willing to put the work into it, but it's kinda the same thing on my end, that I don't wanna put a lot of work into a dream that nobody else shares.
If we say that we want a widget factory to come here, and it's something that's appropriate for a rural community, then that, we would be concrete on it, and then we would bring it to you, and that's where you would take the ball and run with it. But we need to be specific in what we would like-
Well, at least, I don't know, I mean, I don't know that I'm gonna be able to find exactly the widget factory you, you know, but, you know, here would be another, I mean, there's the data center example, but another example would be, you know, and it's out, it's outside of Saint John's city limits, I'm just gonna use this again as an illustration. The state of Kansas is, as, as a state, they're, you know, Department of Ag is spending time going to trade shows in California, trying to recruit dairies that are getting crowded out by urbanization in California to come to Kansas. We even had a dairy from Arizona, taking a look at this part of the, part of the country. They can't locate in, in Stafford County right now, because Stafford County has an ordinance passed in nineteen ninety-eight, I believe, that few people even remember still now, um, but it says, "No corporate farming for dairy or hogs." And we could rescind that, but, it, that, that's that element of, what are we all gonna agree to a, as a community? If we didn't have that there, it's not to say that we would definitely land a dairy, but I could've had a much more meaningful conversation with a fellow from Arizona, if we had at least that kinda groundwork laid. You know?
Do we want her to be looking into this when we're still trying to figure out if we want the truck parking lot there?
I was thinking, is this, is this area we were going to develop for a truck parking?
Right. I'm just listening. Yeah, that's what I thought.
But I think we are interested, you know, in working on something to get a business in the town, I mean, definitely.
Well, the whole thing's not gonna be parked out there either.
In particular, I don't know where we put it.
Well, the counties in Kansas that have succeeded, Fannie has totally embraced the immigrant culture. They just got it, getting, building a new ground, ground beef plant, they've got cheese plants, they've got Tyson, but they totally went out and embraced immigrant culture.
I would point to McPherson as being one, too, that right now is enjoying some good success, and they became their own utility long ago, and they're offering utility rates that are way, I don't, I, don't quote me, I won't, I won't throw out the number I think it is, but it's a lot cheaper than anywhere else, and that's part of how they landed Vi-, Vi- Yega and Pfizer, and, um, you know, some of that industry.
The other counties, West of here, that are growing have wind.
Like, already developed, ready to go in.
Yeah, I mean, they, they, I think they, they did their utility plant construction twenty years ago, or whatever, I mean, like, they've been, they, this is a long-term strategy for them.
Can I, it, it's been my experience on the projects I've worked, worked on, is you have to take inventory of, of what you have, so that somebody calls or, or, that information's just readily available on the website, or, or, and, and I mean, age of population, percentage of college grads, median household income, available housing, water rights, I mean-
For me, one of the big things is an actual site to offer.
I mean, it, it, I mean, it has, because, and, and one of the last projects I worked for, the only thing that the company was looking at was, was the, the available water right for this city versus how much they consumed. That, that was the biggest thing, and so, that information was available, and the, and the city started, or the company started working on buying land around the city, uh, which was then gonna be annexed by the city. So, I mean, it, it, it just has to be inventoried and kept just completely, and market, I mean, marketing, heck, you've got a spot on the website, that kinda stuff, information, can you list it on the website?
At least we're talking here about a, a, a piece of land that the city owns and has control over, you know, like, there's, there is that, and maybe that's, I don't know. I find that what is a barrier a lot of the time is, again, is, is there a place actually ready, we could look all around city square here, and it feels like there's not much activity, and so, in kind of a way, the, the logical intuition is that there's, there's places somebody could go if they had a good idea, but in reality, we all know that those are owned by someone, and they may not be that motivated to let go of it. And I, I find that that's the case with, you know, undeveloped land, too, and, so...
Everybody's hands are tied, I guess, it's just I-
Site control is just like what we're talking about here with the housing stuff. Site control is significant, so, I think it's good at least that there is land there, I guess we just need to think through, I mean, it's, it's fifteen acres, but for a lot of development, it's not big enough for a lot of the kinds of, okay, so, something came through my office today. Think I can pull it up quickly to give you-
We have six.
An idea behind it.
Everybody seated?
Thought I had it, but I don't, I guess, I was gonna give you an idea of what it was, but I think they were looking, in this case, for a ready-to-go site, and it was actually one that a town our size might be able to accommodate, you know, some of these things are, they want buildings of a hundred and fifty thousand square feet, ready to go, you know, we don't obviously have that kinda stuff, but this one, I think, was more like fifteen thousand, and they wanted three thousand dollar, uh, feet of office space, and, um, you know, what, you know, I can't remember if this one needed, um, rail access or highway access, but sometimes, you know, the transportation side of it is a strategic consideration.
I just, I know it's not easy, but I just want you to know, if you happen to run across a deal, I think council's willing to work with you on it.
Okay. Do you foresee budgeting a, an amount to dedicate to, you know, the development that may need to occur for either roads or, um, whatever else, like, yeah, do you foresee budgeting a known amount for-
I can't, I don't see why we can't look in, look into it and see where we can get that money from, I mean, what do you, how do you guys feel?
I think we need to remember-
We can't budget to pay for their infrastructure.
I mean, that-
The road can be-
You guys always gotta understand, we do have one percent sales tax.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's part of it.
That's part of it, I mean, it's designated for economic development, but-
We could always extend our TIF the way that we proposed the first time, and put it all in there.
I just think, it all has to go into one, though, like we talked about before, though, I mean, yeah, everything has to be there on the level, you know, you, if you don't have available housing, you're not gonna get a business in, if you don't get a business in, you're not gonna get any more housing, so those two've gotta be on the same, but that infrastructure's gotta be the same way, I mean, it's just, I guess it's an all-three on-the-level playing field, but it all has to come up at the same time, that's the, that's the bad thing, but really, how do you survive if we don't figure it out?
Well, you know, and to expand upon that, maybe I should be helping everyone think about a bigger picture, and really thought about this, but, um, so, one of the projects that's in my, on my plate right now, um, I don't know if, I don't know if we're gonna get the funding that we need to carry this forward, but long story short, I can see a path for how it concept, could maybe be brought forward, so, um, we've talked about the idea of a, an industrial use facility here that's a, a rail loop, um, that presumably would be anchored by a grain loading facility, but if we, um, have a port authority own the rail loop and the land- but if we have a port authority own the rail loop and the land, and lease access to it, to the grain facility, it would leave the option open of being able to develop it further in that rail loop around, you know. So you could recruit a number of businesses that may be looking for rail access as something that is significant from their, I don't know, from their site selection. So to do that, we're probably looking at south of St. John. Outside the city limits, so it's outside of what you guys are going to have jurisdiction over, but where are those people likely going to live? So maybe we should be looking at kind of trying to develop consensus over that type of development, and let the city focus most on housing, knowing that we've all got limited funds to, you know, try to accomplish everything we want to. An idea to consider.
Far more realistic as well.
So what the city could be doing to help with that is to say, you know, we support the county in its efforts to do that, you know. Sometimes it's even just chatter around town that makes a difference. It's, you know, it's no different, again, coming back to that whole Tonga Noxi example, or whatever. The, the chatter around town, it matters. Maybe what we do is lead that, you know what, that's, that's something that Stafford County could benefit from, we should get behind that. And then, you know, the, the housing piece doesn't take, I don't know, as much probably money, frankly, to do, and still have some expansion and-
Is there a reason when generation is avoided to step again?
It's not because of a strict restriction, you know, like I've heard before, people say, oh, we're too close to Equine River. That doesn't present a hard and fast restriction. But our wind regime, looking at maps, is not quite as strong as it is west of here, and it's enough that the energy companies that I've talked with would rather go somewhere else. And the other, if the city owned it, maybe there'd be more benefit to it. I look at it sometimes as the, you know, and, and, yeah, and there, there's maintenance issues with this thing for sure. But what I'm going with in terms of an investment, wind infrastructure is exempt from property tax. So, for all of those millions of dollars worth of investment, there's really very little public funding impact. You know, you can negotiate a payment in lieu of taxes, which the city of St. John would not get, because you're not putting those wind turbines in city limits. So the county can negotiate a payment in lieu of taxes, but my observation has been that it's a drop in the pan. You know, it's just a flash in the pan, or whatever, compared to what it would be if those at their, at their cost of construction, if that was put on the tax rolls, it would be so much more. So, think Spearville gets like three hundred and fifty thousand a year, which, sure, it's three hundred and fifty thousand, but if you put, I don't know, what, how many exactly are in the Spearville district? But, you know, it's probably a couple hundred million dollars worth of wind turbines if those were on the top property tax rolls. So in some ways, I feel like it's not strategically the most impactful type of business to recruit it. Yes, it has some jobs, but most of the jobs are there for a short period of time and then are gone.
That's what I was going to say, they don't employ a whole lot of people.
They do, yeah, some, some for maintenance and so forth, but they aren't, there aren't very many that stay long term. So, I, I at one time put a lot of time into researching some of that. The bigger advantage is if you've got local ownership of the, of the equipment, so that you're earning some income on an ongoing basis from that. But it's still, I don't know, that we're going to get into that game.
Going back to your deal on the south end of town, if, would it not be smarter for the city to, the city to annex them into the city? If you put something south of the railroad tracks?
I think that that would not necessarily help us do recruiting.
Cut them a break and then annex them in.
Well, I mean, literally, from a property ta, it would be hard to use that as, I think, the strongest recruiting chip, because property taxes long term are going to be higher, and the utility rates are definitely higher. I'm on your side, I am, I want to find ways to expand-
You also have to convince the property owners to sell.
Well, that's true, you have that problem anywhere around St. John, on the outside.
And the last time this rail facility was proposed, the property owners would not sell.
So we had, we've had three companies take a solid look at St. John as a location to put a loading cart facility. And in each case, I would say we're kind of the bridesmaid instead of the bride. You know, we were, we were just a little less brain dense than another alternative, where they thought they could make a little more money. So I think we're going to have to get a little more creative with how we kind of balance that with some type, and, and to me, that idea of owning the rail loop and the land, so you're, you're, we're assuming, you know, when I say we, you know, at the county level, are assuming some of the cost of construction, so their return on investment can be more readily obtained. But the other piece of it is, that I think would be advantageous for the county, is that by owning that rail and loop infrastructure, you know, that rail, then you've got the ability to reuse it to recruit other businesses. So I would contrast it with like Canton, I don't know if you ever take Fifty-Six Highway East? So they've got one of those kinds of facilities, but mid-Kansas co-op owns it in its entirety. And so you've got that beautiful mile loop of rail that gets used about Fort Daisy Month, you know. But, you know, if it were set up as a port, it's kind of like using an airport. You know, the people who have airplanes don't own the runway, they lease access to it on the days they need it. And that's kind of the same concept that you're getting at with an industrial, an industrial port as well. You're, you've got a public piece of, of access point to the rail infrastructure. We don't have a place right now that, I mean, even the siding at the co-op is no longer functional. So there's no way for any company to be able to use that mainline railroad located in Stafford County.
Well, I think to council, I think it's, we really, we would want to work with you. But I think we really need to get a clear plan of what we, what we want, because I think we're just talking in circles right now. First things first, see about the property for rental, and then I guess we can just go from there, you know, so.
Sounds great.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Carolyn. All right. All right, we have a three-minute executive session to discuss employee evaluation pursuant to non-elected personnel matter. Quick question, yes. Do we have to do each evaluation separately, John?
Well, how was it that we did this in the past? Can we do it by, is it, can we break down into, I'm sorry, I'm tired, department?
You would take my way.
I think we can do, are they all the same? Let's just do them all.
They're evaluations, aren't they?
Yeah.
Can we not discuss more than one person in an executive session for an evaluation?
Maybe just do three, six, nine, you wrote a crank, two minutes, ten minutes.
No, the two, ten minutes are separate.
Yeah, I'm just talking like the first three.
Okay, yeah, you can do them all, just call the person, you have four, one called in.
I don't think we're calling anybody in, are we?
You got me.
Okay. I don't care.
And Alan, if you want to know.
On mine, for what?
Your eval I did on you.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't think, no, I don't have one.
You completed one.
For a different, for my employee.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so we're going to do the first three and get our thoughts.
How long, does it need to be nine minutes, or do you think we can do them in five?
Just make it ten.
I was going to say, I think you can do it in five, but-
We went from nine minutes to ten.
If you think we can do it in five, let's go with five.
I'd, I'd make a motion for a five-minute executive session to discuss employee evaluation pursuant to non-elected personnel matter. To who? Everybody at the table?
Jamie?
Is that right?
Yeah, and Kyle.
And Kyle.
Are you doing mine?
And Alan.
And Alan.
Okay, I have a motion on table, second. Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Where'd you go?
Motion carries, we'll resume at eight forty-five. All right. Back in session.
I would make a motion to increase Del Thomas from fourteen eighteen an hour to fourteen fifty-three an hour, and Steven Sheets from fifteen ninety-seven an hour to sixteen forty-four an hour, according to the pay raise guidelines.
Yeah, I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
What's the next one for us?
We can do yours first.
Okay, I have a word.
Make a motion for a ten-minute executive session to discuss employee performance pursuant to non-elected personnel, to include council, her bet table, Kyle, and the police chief.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries. We'll resume at eight fifty-five. Call this meeting back to order. We have one last executive session, ten-minute executive session to discuss employee performance pursuant to non-elected personnel matters.
All of us around the table and Kyle? Salute.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries, we will resume at nine oh five.
You're too late.
I don't know, it's important, Tim.
Call this meeting back to order.
I move, we promote Jeff Williamson to the department head of the electrical department, maintain the same position style he has right now, and oversee the employees that will be under his electrical department.
And there's a zoning administrator, as of right now. We can't change that yet. Unless you want to appoint me right now.
Trying to clarify, in your tent, leave the city superintendent, superintendent position open.
We're not discussing that, we're talking about moving Jeff to the department head of the electrical department.
And he's clarifying what he just said, and we're leaving that position open.
Yeah.
Does we leave that position open, or we can do Jamie to be city superintendent? But I think it's under, I think under manager, it's already under you.
Well, you just have a, you just have a part of your ordinance for a position for superintendent. So I think you just leave it open.
The superintendent open.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
And it is a promotion, and make-
Motion carries.
I would make a motion to adjourn.
Um, I'm going to have to stop you there, because now we're without a zoning administrator. That's what I was saying.
Okay, I rescind my motion to adjourn. So do we need-
I'll make a motion to make Jamie-
You, hold on there. You can't do anything.
Why?
Because you're going to have to amend the agenda and add this discussion onto it first.
Who seconded that last name?
Nobody.
Did you?
The what?
Motion to adjourn, Kyle.
No, I rescinded it, there's nobody seconded it.
Uh, Jim, Jim made it, and who seconded it? You seconded it, Ryan seconded, okay.
So, I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to discuss zoning administrator.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to make Jamie the zoning administrator for the city.
I'd like to discuss my options.
Second. Now, is there discussion?
Um, yes, because zoning is a complete nightmare mess, and I have been on the phone with Mr. Foster several times today. I am going to have him be coming out for a training, so everyone knows what the heck is going on.
Who's everyone?
Um, you guys will be invited, but my, my planning commission, it's planning commission, it is not zoning board. We don't have building permits, we have zoning permits. And we're going to get it figured out, because, I attempted to keep my name off of all of this, because it is, it is very different from everything that we do, and it's intense, but we need to make sure that we are doing it correctly, so.
Or you, do you want to look into any training for zoning administration?
That's what they're going to bring him out here for.
Well, I thought it was just a deal with that one deal.
No. So Mark's probably the only one here that remembers zoning issues-
You're right.
With Bickley Foster. Basically, we adopted stuff before I was on council that pertains basically to the city of Wichita. That is how our zoning regulations are put together, is what happens in Wichita is good for St. John, Kansas. And that's, and that's why it's such a nightmare with our zoning regulations.
Well, the process is the biggest, like, making sure that people have stuff filled. You know, you come in and get a zoning request, and the paper's not filled out correctly, because no one understands it. And then we say you have to know your property lines, and then property owners have a complete breakdown, because heaven forbid they know their property lines for us to have the accurate information to be able to do anything. And that right there creates the trickle-down issues.
Zoning is not easy, be honest.
No.
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 Then you're up for it, though.
I mean, why not?
She has a choice.
I'm having a baby.
You have a choice.
I want it done right, so.
That's a yes.
I would suggest you delegate some of that, Jamie.
I'm working on part of it.
Especially for enforcement, et cetera, other things. I think if you supersede, supervise it, and maybe bless it that you can point other people underneath you, another department underneath you, to do the enforcement, investigation, et cetera.
That's part of the plan, but I want to be able to master it before I let someone else take it over, so I know that it's being done correctly. You know, it's not controlled things.
I think your shoulders may not be that broad.
Well, we're getting there.
Do we have, did we have a second on that? Okay, I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
I abstain, because I'm not going to stack more on Jamie.
Okay, motion carries.
Well, they carry. Now, anybody else got anything to amend the agenda?
You guys got to coordinate next time.
Hey, we match.
Yeah, I didn't realize that.
Make the motion, adjourn.
Second. I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries.